Hi, everybody. I'm Steve Bosque, the opinion editor. You see my colleagues there, Dan Sweeney and Randy Schultz, who you know very well. And I want to thank you for coming on this afternoon very much. We've got, we've got two, from two of you, a very comprehensive questionnaire. And that's where I'm going to begin. I'm going to begin with a question for you, Representative Matt Willhite. Matt, I'm going to read from Michelle McGovern's questionnaire to us. Here's what she wrote in part, quote, "My biggest concern is my opponent's connection and funding from one particular special interest group. His entire career has been focused on their needs." He's talking, of course, about firefighters. And she says, and from my examination, she's right, more than 60% of your campaign funding comes from firefighters. So my question is, are you a single interest candidate here?
Well, absolutely. Thank you, Steve, for the question. And absolutely not, obviously. In my 14 years of experience in elected office, I've taken money from a lot of organization groups. A lot of other people on this call are my opponents. Obviously, her husband was a beneficiary of fire money from the firefighters every election he's been in. Well, he wouldn't have been elected office if it wasn't for this firefighter, because I appointed him to the village council. So I got, I guess, obviously, having firefighters on an elected office is a good thing. And, you know, I think campaign contributions get you a conversation, but they don't get you any vote. And I think my proven track record is that I've, I've helped and supported a lot of firefighter issues, of course, a lot of first responder issues, but also a lot of people when the anti-gun issues, when I voted on them, the pro-choice issues, helping with pharmaceuticals and people in healthcare and so many different areas. So I would say that contributions, again, only get you a conversation, not a vote. And so I'm proud to have one of the most honored professions in the history of this country, this state, supporting me. And firefighters have been that. So many other candidates in this county or this state have been beneficiaries of firefighters endorsements and support too, because they all seek it, because they know they're hardworking, salt-of-the-earth people that are out there helping every day when someone dials 911. And so because they're helping me, because I've been a firefighter for my entire career, almost 30 years, I'm proud to have them. I stand with them every single day.
Okay. Michelle McGovern, thanks for being here. You heard what your opponent just said. I want you to amplify on the comment you made in the questionnaire about, about Mr. Willhite.
Yeah, sure, Steve. Thanks for having me. Thanks for, good to see you, to see everybody. Look, I, first of all, have a career of standing by and working with firefighters and the fire union. And I'm really proud of the work we've been able to do together. And my issue is not with firefighters. My issue here is that even just today, 150,000 more dollars has been dropped into Matt's PAC from the fire union, making the total $365,000. You know, that is one single funder. And I think our citizens should be concerned about one single funder at, at any rate. And let me be clear about my husband's counsel. When they were looking for someone to serve on the city council, I was their first choice. They came to me and said, hey, Michelle, we'd really like you to do this. And I said, you know what? I like the work that I'm doing for Senator Nelson right now. Let me introduce you to my husband, because I think he'd be a great fit. And I appreciate that support. And John has been a steadfast councilman and a, and a strong councilman. Look, I, I, I think that the facts are clear here. I enjoy a diverse group of supporters in my campaign and have taken the time to spend time talking to a diverse group of people from $10 donors to $1,000 donors. That is an open conversation for me. Matt hasn't had to do that, because there's money being poured into his campaign straight from one source.
Okay. I want, I want to cycle back to Mr. Willhite for a follow-up question. Just a minute. No, I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have to mute your, I'm gonna have to mute Mrs. Sharp's mic, because...
Oh, not you. I was talking to my coworker.
Oh, we're only gonna allow one person at a time to speak, Mrs. Sharp, with all due respect.
Okay.
All right. We'll, we'll get to you momentarily. There's a, there's a boilerplate question on the questionnaire. You've seen it 100 times. And our questionnaire was, what are the, in your opinion, what are the three most important issues facing your district? And that question we put to the candidates in this race. Palm Beach County, like many places, is grappling with opioid abuse, a lack of housing affordability, mental health, serious transportation problems. I could go on and on. But Matt Willhite, among the three most important issues in the district, you put this, quote, "Support for our law enforcement and fire rescue first responders," unquote. Frankly, it floored me. People overwhelmingly support their law enforcement and first responders. Why is that one of the most important issues in this district?
Well, I guess I would say one reason. First of all, you know, there's a lot of issues that are important. You asked for a top three. There's a lot more, obviously. And I've been on the front line of a lot of those issues you've been talking about. You know, you talked about the opidep epidemic. I was on the front line. So is that an important issue, of course? We had people come to the state that were dying every single day, coming to our servo homes and dying. And we were having to give them Narcan and try and save them and save the reputation of Florida that would be, that this was happening. We have developments, and my opponent's been supported overwhelmingly by a lot of, by a lot of developers, that, you know, we have an ardent neighborhood out in western Palm Beach County that it takes 12 to 15 minutes to get to the gate of it. We have Coluso, which has the same thing. It takes a long time to get out there with no water supply. These are where developments are moving west. And we're not keeping up with pace and offering those services. Let's face it, there was a lot of rhetoric across this country the last few years about defund and anti-police. I wouldn't say they're overwhelmingly supported in that, in that area, Steve, because they're not then. And I have not said that. And I've been a steadfast, steadfast supporter of our police officers. So I don't think it's one of the only issues. You asked for an important issue, and I said there's a lot. Health insurance, housing insurance, as you said, opidepemic, water. I put water and quality of life issues on there first, I believe, because I think those are a lot of things that are very important. So again, I go back to the fact that it doesn't matter who supports me. I support everybody. And I think I have a track record and a proven track record in passing 23 pieces of legislation in Tallahassee about proving that I support everybody that's in the state of Florida and recognizing I work for them.
Okay. Very good. I'm gonna pause here and open the floor to my colleagues Randy Schultz and Dan Sweeney. Randy, your, your mic's off.
Go ahead, Dan.
Oh, I don't have anything...
Okay. Well, then, if I may. Mr. Willhite, on your questionnaire, you seem to vacillate on whether you support the Affordable Housing Bond referendum. Do you or don't you?
First, I thank you for the question, Randy. And I hope that we're gonna give Silver an opportunity to answer some questions here, because although Michelle is in this race, there is three people in this race.
I'm, I'm, I'm taking this, I'm taking this question to everybody.
I understand. Thank you, Randy. I, no, I've been clear on that. I support it, because I think the county commission should ask people what they want to spend their money on. And so sending a referendum out to the public to ask them if they're willing to take up the issue, one of the most important issues in affordable housing, I think we should give them the opportunity. So I don't think, I think I put yes, because people should be able to decide. You know, I, again, I would ask what my opponent, one of my opponents says, because her number one supporter voted against it and did not, didn't want to do this. So I, I don't know, I'm not sure if my opponent really supports affordable housing or not.
Well, excuse me, I'm trying to, you, what you said on the questionnaire was, you thought it was correct to ask the public.
Yes.
Now, okay. What do you think, what do you think the public should say?
Well, I think they should decide whether they can afford it. And, and that's a decision they make sitting at their dinner table when they're having to make decisions over...
Am I going, am I going to get a direct answer on this from you? Do you or do you not support the referendum? Will you be voting for it?
I believe I said yes, Randy. I do support it. And I do support giving the people the choice to decide that. When it comes to me, are you asking my personal vote when I get about, a voice on the ballot? Again, I'm going to decide yes.
I just, okay. Ms. McGovern, do you support the referendum?
I do. I do. And let me just say that one of the things that I will be laser-focused on, on the county commission, is making sure that the housing bond has clear eligibility requirements and clear accountability requirements. We, there's no doubt that the conversation around this district has been around housing. I've spent a year, you know, talking to folks all around the districts. And affordability in housing is the number one issue, hands down. I want to make sure that those, that those dollars are used as efficiently and effectively as possible. We currently have a backlog of, of, of items coming out of the county as far as approvals and planning and zoning, that, that department isn't fully staffed. And those are the things that I'm gonna want to get, get to work on and making sure that these projects are, are really looked at. And, and by the way, that these projects are also considered by, so that organizations like Habitat for Humanity have, have a chance to take, to, to, to offer affordable housing as well. Not just some of the, you know, the developers who are looking to get, you know, some of the, the bond, you know, dollars in order to infuse.
Okay. Ms. Sharp, do you, do you support the Affordable Housing Bond referendum?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Do you think, do you think it will be enough to address the problem? Or if you are elected, do you think there is more that the county commission could do?
There is more. To begin with, and thank you for asking the question. Thank you for allowing us to interview. And thank you, Matt, for acknowledging my presence. If the loophole had not existed when it comes to developers and their building of their developments, then affordable housing would have been addressed much longer ago, which is when it should have been addressed. I've been talking about it for the past eight years. So there are other counties that have the same issues, or have the same issue that we have, that have utilized empty houses, malls, classes, and other things to offset the cost and the rehabilitation of buildings, turning them into affordable housing. And I think that if we utilize some of their blueprints, we could actually do the same thing. You don't need to recreate the wheel. We just actually need to follow the rules that we set.
Ms. Sharp, when you, when you say loophole, do you mean the option that the county gave developers to pay a fee in lieu of building affordable housing?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Let me go with a question, and we'll go in reverse order and start with, with Ms. Sharp. This may happen before you are on the commission, at least in part, but it also might spill over if you're elected. Do you support the proposed swap that would allow GL Homes to transfer 1,600 acres outside the agricultural reserve area in, in return for being able to build 1,250 homes in the agricultural reserve area?
No, I do not.
Okay. Ms. McGovern?
I think we need to get all the details. I, here's what I think when it comes to the ag reserve. The rules are the rules, right? We enter into an agreement. Everyone has to play by those same rules. And when it comes to the ag reserve, I think we need to stick to the rules that are on the books. I think that there is a proposal here on the table that there are still some details that we don't know, that have not been made public. I watched the first public hearing on this, looking forward to the next public hearing on this. And I think that if we're gonna go outside the rules, there needs to be a big, robust discussion about it. I want to hear what Cobra has to say about it, what the West Boca Alliance has to say about it, what Delray Alliance has to say about it, and what the citizens in the acreage have to say about it before I make, I would make that decision.
Well, right now, if you talk about the rules, the rules are that this can't happen.
Right. So they're, they're opening it up and having a big discussion about whether or not we're gonna go outside the rules. I, I understand that there's some, there's some water proposals on the table that are being considered. I don't have the details. I, I, I would, I would want to see the full package before I would decide whether or not. But my inclination is to not go outside of the rules when it comes to the ag reserve.
Mr. Willhite, same question?
Thank you, Randy. And let me say, so it's clearer, no, I don't support it. And then let me tell you a couple of reasons why. First of all, I don't think it's right that the county commission is gonna have their final vote and decision on August 23rd, which is election day for this county commission race potentially, let alone two more in November. So the change in balance of the commission could be changed, I guess, first of all. So I think it should be waited for the new commission and not, and not, you know, being put us, put on the voters on August 23rd, where they're voting on a potential new county commissioner or, in the primary. Secondly, 1,000 of those acres that they're proposing in the, in the acreage area are already deemed water and storage and, and reserved. So I, I think this is a false narrative that we're saying about swapping this. And if we want to talk about what Cobra and the, and all these groups want, they're not saying no, but they're saying it has to be some kind of smart growth. And every single meeting they have, they're cautiously saying that it needs to be really smart growth. But to me, I read it as they're very concerned about what's going on. They've seen the turn, the widening of the turnpike and different things affecting the western communities. And I think that Cobra is actually, I think they're not supportive of it. They're just not coming out and saying no. And like I say, in every conversation I've had with them or their public comments. So I would not support this, and I certainly wouldn't support it, especially being on August 23rd.
Okay. I have a couple more things, but I'll wait. My turn?
I, I had a quick, kind of a, kind of a follow-up to something that you, you kicked off this conversation with, with, with Rep. Willhite. You mentioned that, you know, he, Steve, you mentioned that he put this, this focus on firefighters as a top issue. But Ms. McGovern, you also said, not necessarily about fire, but, but you said one of the topics is prioritizing safety in our community. And you said that safety means ensuring that law enforcement needs are met and our sheriff has the tools needed to be successful, as well as our first responders and firefighters. My question is, do you think that currently the sheriff does not have the tools needed to be successful? Do you think the law enforcement is underfunded in Palm Beach County?
I don't. I don't. I, I, I think that the sheriff has the resources that he needs. I think our firefighters have the resources that they need. And, you know, yes, I couldn't give you three. I added public safety as my fourth item, because I think...
Why is this a top concern, then?
Because I think public safety is something we sometimes take for granted, right? We live in a safe county with, with a strong, with, with a strong sheriff who, who has, you know, community support. There's a part of this district I haven't been in where I haven't seen the leaders at PBS so involved, serving food in the community. It's, 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 it's welcomed, and same with fire, right? And so long as we have that strong presence, so long as we continue to do the right things as far as supporting our first responders, safety isn't an issue, right? But as soon as we start to deeter away from that in any way, you know, it's, the safety is one of those things that's, once it gets away from you, it's hard to get caught back up again. And I think it just needs to be on our minds. It's not something we should take for granted.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's not a problem now, but it needs to be...
Not a problem.
Watch on, just make sure that it doesn't...
Ever vigilant.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
I, I'd like to ask Ms. Sharp's a question, and that is, help, help us, please, Ms. Sharp, and help the voters. Tell us what's the most noteworthy difference between yourself and your two opponents in this race?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
My question is, help us and help the voters. What is the most noteworthy difference between yourself and your two opponents?
Let me see. I'm a 30-year-on-the-ground servant leader volunteer. That's number one. For anything else that's said about me, I actually have worked with the majority of the municipalities in this county by assisting the citizens. I'm a volunteer youth citizen and domestic violence survivor. I actually started a nonprofit four years ago to help domestic violence victims relocate and establish their homes in different places, because I myself am a survivor. My ex-husband beat me. My son died four hours after he was born. That was the only child I had. So I have a love for the people. I'm also an ordained minister and a 30-year grant writer. And so I have a love for the department, especially Fire Rescue, because I just love Fire Rescue. They came when I needed them. I also wrote grants to them to get PPE money, almost a million dollars. So I'm different, because I'm on the ground with the people. I actually talk to the communities. I work in the communities. I was the lead grant writer for the Lake Region Worst Treatment Plant, as well as a liaison between Palm Beach County and, and those cities when those cities had a problem talking to Palm Beach County. We provided the $58 million water plant there, because the federal government said the water was, shouldn't not be bathed and let long drank. Even though they didn't give us much money for the project, I still was able to get 33 million in grants. And so I am, to me, the only candidate, other than Matt being a firefighter, of course, touching people's lives, hands-on, I am the only candidate that has literally worked with the people. And I have that, that trademark on their name, people sit here, because I'm sick and tired, sick and tired of people sitting on the dience that have taken donations or advice from people that are, that are not needy to, 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 to allow projects to be done that don't help everybody. That is another reason as to why I don't have much money, because I haven't accepted money from everybody, and I'm not going to. It's another thing that makes me stand out and makes me different. I also have a unique ability to communicate with anybody, from somebody on the corner to somebody in the boardroom.
All right. Thank you very much. Matt Willhite, growth and development is a huge issue in your community, has been for a very long time. Tell us what distinguishes you from Ms. McGovern as it relates specifically to growth and development decisions?
Well, again, I wouldn't say one candidate. There's three of us in this race. And so what I, what I would say is, I think growth and development has, has taken over in this county to the point where we just allow developers, as you mentioned earlier, and I've mentioned this many times in my campaign, we allow developers to buy out of things for affordable housing units. We let them just take open vacant land and clear it and build, instead of redeveloping and reinvesting money back into our, our communities that are so lighted or need assistance and help. And we built up, and, you know, a lot of our major cities, but affordable housing units, loft apartments above commercial space and do different things. So instead of just urban sprawl that we've allowed to happen and not kept up on our infrastructure, whether it's police or fire, or roads, or water, or sewer, and all those different things, it's just difficult in this county to keep up with as it moves west. As it moves west, it starts to impact our ag area, where a lot of the food that's, that shows up on our tables and people across this country is starting to affect them. And so we're starting to lose green space, which helps our environment and water retention that holds our environment. So, you know, I, I think there has been a lot of growth in this area. This and western Delray is gonna be the largest growing areas and continues to, because to them, it just likes an open roadmap to development, where we have cities like Lake Worth or West Palm Beach, or the Glades, or Riviera Beach, and Lake Park that could use some, some redevelopment and start putting some of those things in there, where there is access to mass transit, like trains and different things like that. So if we really want to help people that are, that are having difficulty, let's make everything easier for them, whether it's lowering the rent, lowering the insurance, but giving them opportunities for jobs or use of man transit, mass transit, to keep their prices down. So I've been fighting for this. I fought to lower insurance rates in Tallahassee this year. I authored an amendment that would freeze insurance rates in the state of Florida for the next year, because people can't afford to stay here once they get here. And so we can talk about the buzzword affordable housing all we want, but it's not just buying a house for $100,000 in Palm Beach County. It's making sure that we meet everybody's expectations, and we're not doing that right now, I don't think.
Okay. Thanks very much. I've got just one quick, one other quick question here for Michelle McGovern. Michelle, have you, how closely have you, you know, candidates, very, candidates should very fastidiously, you know, research their opponents' records? How closely have you looked at Matt Willhite's voting record in Tallahassee? And what should voters know about it?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I have, well, I, I also want a chance to answer the workforce housing question, if I could, but let me answer your question first. Yeah, you know, I've been Matt's constituent the entire time he's served in office. And I, I do think that Matt has been a champion for his self, own self-interest, right? Whether it's, it's, it's fire, whether it's, you know, issues that affect him directly, that's, that's really his focus. He, you know, he talks a lot about all the votes that he's had, but he hasn't really, you know, when it comes to, once it comes to choice, he hasn't really championed his own, own bills or amendments. When it, last night, we had a conversation about red flag laws, right? And Matt voted for red flag laws. And I appreciate that he backed our leaders up and made sure that we got that important legislation passed. And, and Lori Berman was able to say, I was the original sponsor. Thanks for that, Matt. I appreciate it. And Kelly Skidmore was able to say, I was an original co-sponsor. Thanks for that, Matt. These are the kinds of things where, you know, I've had the opportunity to really lead in this community and really dig into this community. And, and when Matt leads, it's for his own self-interest. And when Matt, but when it comes to some of the issues that we care about, women's reproductive rights and, and, and gun control issues, he's not as much of a leader on those issues.
Matt, I'll let you respond to what you just heard from your opponent there.
Well, obviously, I, I disagree with everything that was possibly said. First of all, except for the one thing, is I was voting or being the leader on things, because I have been elected, in elected office. Self-interest, I don't know what self-interest I'm, I'm really doing when I'm passing things for prescription drugs for people, when I'm passing all these different things. You, first of all, maybe we don't understand, you can only file so many bills in Tallahassee. But I guess passing 23 bills with my name on them in Tallahassee in six years as a, in the minority party. But when we talk about guns, you know, I broke from my caucus when we took a caucus position to vote for the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas bill. I'd say that's leadership pretty good, when you break your own caucus, because you think it's the right thing to do. And we set a new standard in Florida for the laws that are in place today, respected gun laws. Where have I been on abortion or women's choice? 18 times I voted for women's choice and fought back against these extreme abortion bans in the state of Florida. You know, again, I think it's just, it's disingenuous to say that I haven't supported anything, and I haven't been a champion on anything. I, I guess it's just wrong to say, because I've been there leading, and I've been leading by example, by voting on things and being elected office. And obviously, the voters realize that, because they keep sending me back to elected office, where I've been on the ballot seven times so far, so, and won. So I think it's disingenuous to say that.
Okay. Dan Sweeney, I think you had your hand up there.
Yeah, I wanted to revisit something that Rep. Willhite, in your, in your answer, two answers ago, on workforce development, you mentioned places that need redevelopment, like the Glades. You know, it's obviously a poverty-stricken area, and because it's so geographically separated from the main population centers of Palm Beach County, it's so often ignored. How do you, you say the Glades needs redevelopment. How do you promote that on the, on the county commission?
Well, obviously, thank you. And obviously, it's been an area that, living here in Wellington, that I've known about. When we, when, when, when the Glades needed inspectors and code enforcement people from Wellington, we sent them out there to help. When then-Representative Bruiser, Senator Bruiser, was trying to get roadways and infrastructure for them, I was supporting him and voting on those things. Obviously, when Fire Rescue merged, I went out there and worked immediately to start merch and offer them the best fire and EMS services. Palm Beach County came in and built a new water system and infrastructure out there to make sure they had quality drinking water, because, for instance, Pahokee was losing 50% of their water they produced to leaks or just to theft. So I think there are a lot of things and opportunities like that. I think the real problem separating the Glades, too, is job opportunities and the fact that, you know, with gas prices what they are, we can't get people to the coast to be able to work in those jobs. And so building some better kind of mass transit back there, we missed the opportunity on building a rail system from, and bridging the east coast to the west coast in Palm Beach County. And we need to do more things like that. Listen, our, our bus system has, has more, we have more stops in Palm Beach County and our Palm Trans system than all of Dade County. They're three times the size of us. It's not working for them to ride a bus when it takes them an hour and a half to get to a job. So there's a lot of things we can do to help them. But let's really face it out there, too. They don't even have affordable housing or quality of life housing out there that we need to go out there and hold developers and landlords accountable to make sure that they have a safe place to lay their head down and raise their children as well.
Thanks. Ms. Sharp, same question. What do you do on the county commission to, to promote redevelopment in the, in cities and cities in the Glades? Welcome back to Ms. Sharp's. Ms. McGovern, same question?
Yeah. I'm really proud to have worked my entire career in the Glades. You know, the water treatment plant, the grant funding that Ms. Sharp's talked about, those were, those were all supported by Senator Nelson's office by, you know, with, with my, my work on that and really proud, really proud of that project. You know, when it comes to redevelopment in the Glades, first of all, you know, jobs is priority number one. And I'm proud to have been invited by Marsha Andrews to join the Glades Career Readiness Council, something I've been a member of. Even in this, even even in my current role, I still log into that and still, and still engage. And that's where we're looking for opportunities for those high school students to get jobs. But let me just tell you, there's two projects. I mean, based on the conversations I've had in the community and with the county and, and others, there, there, there are two sites. One at the old hospital site, and one, the school district, gave the old Gove Elementary site to the city of Belgrade for, for housing. And I know that currently, the city of Belgrade is working with the school district and working with the county on redeveloping that area and making it affordable and workforce housing. You know, those are the kinds of projects I'd really like to dig in on. And look, job, you know, jobs are priority number one in the Glades. Career Source has, I've got an office out there and really has a huge presence. There's a lot going on, and I'd like to continue to, to serve and to continue to engage in that conversation. Sylvia?
Yeah.
Ms. Sharp, same question to you. As a member of the county commission, how would you promote redevelopment in the Glades?
I agree with Matt. I also believe that there's, there has to be the job development as well as the affordable housing and the other development. the job development as well as the affordable housing and the other development redevelopment that needs to go on. I don't know if you or any of your coworkers have actually been out in the Glades, have ridden through Belgrade or tried to drive through South Bay or went to Pahokee. But the condition of a lot of the homes that are in rental homes and rental places that are owned by people that don't even live in Palm Beach County are in saddest rate. And the cities, I don't know if they need, we sort of, I'm I'm not really sure what they need. I know they need more support from the county commission to be able to determine what they can and cannot do when it comes to um beefing up their code enforcement and their rules to be followed. As well as at one point in time, um, Michelle brought up the Lake Region Water Treatment Plant. And let me clarify on that. We received, I received very little funding from the federal government. They would not give us much money at all. The majority of the money came from states and direct ask from uh state representatives. But during that period, there was an opportunity for the inland ports to possibly be built in the Glades, and I supported that a hundred percent because I was the U A clerk, the Glades Utility Authority clerk at the time. And I supported that a hundred percent because it would have provided jobs that paid a well, a good enough salary for people to be able to afford to live in the Glades or anywhere else in Palm Beach County. And right now, there's not that many jobs that are accessible, like Matt said, as far as transportation, transportation is concerned, for them to be able to even make money, the law to afford to be able to afford. So while I see a lot of development of new homes from four hundred thousand to a million dollars going up and being planned for the area going out to the Glades, I do not see a whole lot of plans being discussed for redevelopment with the representatives that have been elected in those areas. And that is key to getting it to that point.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Um, I I have a question for all three of the candidates. I'll, I'm gonna start with Matt Willhite. Um, and it's while it's not directly something you'll vote on as a Palm Beach County Commissioner, I think it's an important test of your philosophy about government. And it has to do with something called Marcy's Law, which was, as you know, is an amendment to the Florida Constitution, which has had the effect of uh uh, an an effort, I think, to shield and provide additional protections for crime victims has also had the effect of um shielding things like um the names of a police officer in an officer-involved shooting, things like that. So, Matt, I wanted to ask you, uh, are you a proponent of Marcy's Law and is it working effectively in your opinion?
So I think part of what, thanks, Steve, I think part of what you're getting at is talking about public records, public ability to see information, ability for the the media to get those those documents and stuff. I mean, obviously, there's a lot of cases where law enforcement, uh, some of the stuff should be shielded. Victims information should always be shielded, and I've been, I've been a strong proponent proponent of that uh and a lot of stuff that we passed in Tallahassee. Uh, you know, there's a lot of cases, for instance, I passed a a law this year that uh shielded law enforcement officers' geolocation, their GPS stuff in their vehicles from public records requests. Now then, check, under chapter one nineteen, they could hide their home address, shield it, but uh you could always, in new technology, now track them through GPS. Well, that, I made that, uh, you know, public records request, it's not available now. But we did put, but but what I say in that is I also put outs in that. If there's an investigation, if there's litigation, if there was a civil dispute between a husband or spouse or wife, uh, that their lawyer could get that information. So I think there are uh areas where in public records, things should be shielded and protecting people, but I think there should also always be opportunities uh to get that information.
Okay, Ms. McGovern?
I'm not familiar with Marcy's Law.
Okay. Fair enough, that's okay. It's uh, and and Matt Willhite, am I correct? It's 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 probably, it's a conversation for another day. The legislature run by Republicans, as we all know, has never passed an implementing law to implement Marcy's Law. Uh, it's it's self-executed. And I think that that's the that's the reason for a lot of these disputes about what's public and what isn't. Anyway, Ms. Sharps, do you have an opinion or comment you can share with us?
Yes, Marcy's Law, I I I support it. I thank, I'm thankful for it. I just explained to you all that I am a domestic violence survivor. When the beating first started for my husband, ex-husband, there was no Marcy's Law. Our victim information was everywhere. And so I support Marcy's Law. I also support Marcy's Law because I don't want an officer that is coming to see about me or another domestic violence victim to be tracked to where they are if that violator is looking for his his person that he keeps beating off. I don't want them tracked, I want them protected. I have a problem with Marcy's Law, but I understand the the argument because I've talked to quite a few people and they feel like with police officers do something that maybe they shouldn't have done, they may mistake there's a bad shooting, that all their information needs to be released. But if the shoe is on the other foot, then they don't want it that way. I support Marcy's Law, I really do, and I'm grateful for it.
Okay. Just want to reopen the floor to Dan or Randy.
Um, I I have I have two things, actually. Uh, you you all were uh very complimentary toward the sheriff's office a little while ago, but recently, the sheriff's office came in for a great deal of criticism when some deputies killed a black bear uh in the western communities. Do you think that that criticism is justified and it reveals something problematic?
I don't mind going if you want, Randy. Um, you know, right after that, right after that happened, I reached out to some some leadership in the sheriff's department and I asked, I started asking a lot about it. And I, what I found out, I think there was a lot of concerns about as well F W C. F W C, uh, as we learned from them, the closest tranquilizing gun gun they had was in Tallahassee. That should tell you that there's a problem that we don't have resources here in Palm Beach County to deal with these issues. Was the sheriff justified in shooting it? Uh, I wasn't on the scene, but I can tell you, law enforcement that was on the scene recognized there was a potential risk for children and families in the area. They tried to keep it corralled and contained, they tried to keep it in the tree to keep it until someone else could get there. I know that Bush Wildlife was uh was asked, they wouldn't come do it. Lion Country Safari was asked, they wouldn't come do anything with it. So it was left to the sheriff's department to do something with it. And in their mind, I think they made a decision with a a well uh thought-out decision by their command presence on scene that over safety over life was the the life of the bear. I I hate to hear that, but I've also asked is what happened to the bear afterwards? Was it used to help feed people? Was it, you know, different things that could have been used? Where did it go or was it just disposed of? But I think, again, it shows the bigger the bigger problem that we need more resources in this county for these issues. And as we continue to keep developing and building and taking their uh uh, you know, their environment away, it starts to infringe on them, then we need to make sure that we have resources to mitigate that. And so uh it's unfortunate, I love animals, uh, but in the same respect, life and safety of the people surrounding there was probably the most paramount, and they made the decision on scene that they had to be uh, had to be killed.
How about the other two of you, please?
Yeah, this is Sylvia. I, when it first happened, my first response was, because I do love animals, my first response, first response was, why they have to kill the bear? Why didn't they see the bear? Why didn't somebody rescue the bear? And then I thought about the situation. If it's me and my yard and I have children and you have to make a decision of whether or not my child is going to be safe or you have to kill the bear, then unfortunately, I'll just, you know, as a minister, I'll say a prayer over the bear because I really want my family and those living in the area respected. And there aren't enough resources. There are, and I don't I don't understand why. I don't know why are we asking more of our representatives to be responsible and try to push for efforts for efforts just like this so that we can increase our resources? It's it's something that doesn't happen often, but because of the growth, because the animals are being forced out of their natural habitat, of course, they're going to be in neighborhoods and they're not going to know what to do or how to adjust. So we need to come up with some solution.
Ms. McGovern?
Yeah, I mean, this is just an example of, you know, the myriad of issues that law enforcement find themselves in, right? Uh, you know, I had the opportunity to meet the other day with some of the leaders in District Six um uh from PBSO uh to sit down and just talk to them about one of their top issues, right? And, you know, you would expect, you know, I would expect it maybe to be opioid overdose or, you know, the the latest article about four forty one and Forest Hill being the biggest um act, you know, the the riskiest intersection. It was homelessness, right? It was group homes and their concern about about the increased level of crime out of group homes. I mean, these guys have got to work, you know, worry about all these issues and, oh, by the way, they've got a battle of bear. Um, you know, it just, it just, look, I I think they made the best decision, given the circumstances. It's unfortunate as a person who 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 loves uh, you know, preservation in our wildlife, but I I just think, you know, our, they've got way more on their plate than I think the average person realizes. And um, you know, they made the best decision with what they had.
This question is for Ms. Sharps and Mr. Willhite. Um, Ms. McGovern has the endorsement of the District Six incumbent and apparently most of the elected officials in um Wellington and the Glades. Uh, what do you attribute that to and why don't you have those endorsements? Mr. Willhite first.
Uh, well, thank you, I appreciate the opportunity. Listen, um, you know, our fire union and myself supported Commissioner McKinley when she first originally ran for office. We supported her, thought she did it, she was a great candidate, and she's worked hard for that district. Uh, I think I think it's great that she's had a personal, longtime friendship with Ms. McGovern. Uh, she said that she gave her publicly, she said that she gave her her first job when she needed a job, when she had some family situations. And so, um, you know, I I guess that's why she's supporting her as much as their friendship here. Uh, again, we've had a friendship for a while, but, you know, that's that's obviously her choice to do something. Um, you know, I mean, elected officials in the area, I think some of that comes along with the incumbent commissioner supporting too because they know who you are and um, you know, and and want their support. And so I I think I have a lot of supporters as well, some of them state level, some of them local level, some of them community leaders, some of them organizations. And again, um, I have no problem telling you, it's on my website, who's supporting you, who's endorsed me, and I'm proud of them, and I know that I'm a great candidate. And on August twenty third, uh, I I I'm gonna be victorious, no matter who's supporting who, and then I'll, and then I'm sure that they'll uh, will be reaching out to each one of them and and hopefully getting their support then.
Ms. Sharps?
I uh was not surprised. Um, I have been trying to get in touch with Melissa McKinley ever since I first decided to run, which was, I registered to run over two years ago. And um, I sent her emails and finally got an answer back that she did not want to meet with me if I wanted to know what she thought. I should check her Facebook page or come to the commission meeting. So I wasn't surprised when she um endorsed Michelle because they're friends, and I'm okay with that. I do have support and endorsement endorsements from organizations, and I have endorsements from the people. It it's a, it's a admirable thing to have endorsements from representatives. When I ran before, I had Alsey Hastings endorsement, and that was just the greatest thing to me that has ever happened as far as running for office was concerned. But I'm more impressed by the people that live in the neighborhood that have opened up their homes for me to come in and work with their children or help them get a job endorsing my efforts than I am in actuality about endorsements from representatives that I should have some.
Okay, and Ms. McGovern, you think that you have the endorsements of of those folks because you're friends with them?
Uh, I have the endorsement of, uh, I'm proud of the over fifty endorsements that I've garnered in this race, that I've earned in this race. And I think that that is a result of every single one of them have had the experience of working with me and know that I can deliver results. Um, every single person who has endorsed me, um, every local elected official has also had the opportunity to work with my opponent and has chosen me in this race. Um, because they know that I have a record of results when, you know, when I, when I worked uh for Senator Nelson, we worked with everybody. Uh, I worked with Senator Rubio's office very closely on on tackling issues. And that's why, for example, I have Greg Lingowski's endorsement. Um, he and I worked hand in hand, side by side on on several issues. And so I'm just really proud of the record of endorsements I have. And and look, um, Matt really wants those endorsements too because his fire union guys are calling my my endorsers and asking them to change their mind, letting them know that they may not have fire union support in the future if if they continue to stand with me. And I'm really proud that everyone continues to stick with me um in this race and looking forward to serving District Six as a county commissioner.
Okay.
That's it.
Well, we're we're coming up to the top of the hour, and I I wanted to uh spread, express the sun settles appreciation to all three of you for taking it the time to be here today and answer these questions. So I want to wish you all three the best of luck and thanks again.
Thanks for your time, gentlemen.
Thanks, good luck, everybody.
Thanks for the time that you gave me, gentlemen.
Yes, thank you. Bye.